Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is October 8th, 2024. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your head for a brief invocation. As we come together this evening, let us all remember that we are here to work together and make wise decisions for the good of our community. Amen. I would like to introduce or recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Mike Soprone. Mike, thank you for your assistance as always. Mr. Bob Scott has an excused absence this evening. I would call on Mrs. Fisher this moment for a motion to approve the minutes from the past meeting.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council and workshop minutes for September the 24th. I do find them in order, so I move for their approval.
Second.
The motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. We have one proclamation this evening, and it is for Make a Difference Day, and I'll ask Mrs. Fisher to please read that.
Very honored to read this, as the lay is on to the Volunteer Advisory Committee. I do have a proclamation whereas Make a Difference Day connects people with opportunities to serve, strengthens communities, and promotes civic engagement. And whereas Make a Difference Day is one of the largest single days of service nationwide, uniting tens of thousands of volunteers with a common mission to improve the lives of others through community-driven service projects. Whereas it was established over two decades ago by the Points of Light Foundation, the city of Kettering is proud to be a nationally recognized participant. And whereas the city of Kettering will provide opportunities for all to participate in this day of service designed to leverage the dedication, commitment, and power of volunteers to address a variety of needs in our community. And whereas volunteers from service clubs, faith-based organizations, Blue Star Mothers, local schools, local residents will assist the city by expanding a native plant rain garden at Van Buren Park, help residents in the Wiles Creek neighborhood complete outdoor projects, make fleece blankets for children through the Project Linus at Victory Christian Church, and create holiday greeting cards for our active-duty military members at their own homes with kits that have been provided by the Kettering Volunteer Office. Therefore, Peggy Laner, Mayor of the city of Kettering, does hereby proclaim October the 26th to be Make a Difference Day. It is witnessed by our mayor, and we all appreciate and enjoy being a part of that day.
Okay. The proclamation is going to be received tonight by Dawn Kirchner, who is about to leave as our volunteer director, taking on a new role. She's not going anywhere. But shall we introduce Lindsey at the same time? Okay. All right. Her replacement is going to be Lindsey Curry, who will be taking over the volunteer operation. And you've done a fabulous job. We are glad we're not losing you, and Lindsey's going to keep right on going the same direction. So I want the two of you to receive that. Just say a few words. Yeah. Forget it, I don't want to shake your hair.
Well, thank you, Mayor Laner and City Council, for your support for Make a Difference Day. And we're again proud that the city of Kettering will be participating in this national day of service to make improvements to our community and help our friends and neighbors throughout the community. As part of our 2024 Cities of Service Initiative, volunteers will meet at the Wiles Creek neighborhood bordered by Hale Road, West Avenue, East Dorothy Lane, Hague Avenue, and Wilmington Pike. Volunteers will be assisting property owners with yard maintenance such as leaf raking, light pruning, weeding, and yard debris removal. Volunteers will gather at Victory Christian Church located at 2275 South Patterson Boulevard to make fleece blankets for the nonprofit organization Project Linus. And Project Linus will distribute these blankets to children birthed through age 18 who are seriously ill, traumatized, or otherwise are in need. Volunteers will also continue to work on the Van Buren Park rain garden. It's now in its third year of expansion, and this garden has introduced a variety of native plants to provide beautiful pollinator-friendly plants for visitors to enjoy. And this project continues to be made possible by funding from Keep Montgomery County Beautiful. And finally, for those that aren't able to make any of those opportunities on Make a Difference Day, the volunteer office currently has card kits available, allowing volunteers to make 10 holiday cards for deployed servicemen and women. These will be available through October 25th and need to be returned to us by October the 31st. And those cards will be shared with Blue Star Mothers for distribution worldwide. Make a Difference Day efforts would not be possible without your support, Mayor Laner, City Council, our city staff, our Cities of Service Advisory Board, and of course, our Volunteer Advisory Council, not to mention the hundreds of volunteers through our community that comes out to help. And this makes a positive impact not only in our local Kettering community, but worldwide as well. And of course, you're all invited to stop by at any of those locations Saturday, October 26th between 9:00 and noon. We always have refreshments available. We're hoping for a cool, dry day. We'll see. For additional information, feel free to contact me or Lindsey at 296-2433, or check out our website, and we appreciate everybody's support in this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both so much. Those of you who pay a lot of attention to Kettering City Council meetings will perhaps notice that there's a slight change in our flow of our agenda tonight. That is because we do have a public hearing, which is an unusual situation for us, so we are moving things around a little bit so we can get to that in one segment and not disrupt the meeting with the rest of the flow of business. At this point, I would like to call on anyone who wishes to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Let me clarify, this is for all of our legislative agenda. It is not for the public hearing tonight. If you are here to speak at the public hearing, that's coming up, so that's not for you right now. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. With that, is there anyone who wished to address any of the legislative issues on tonight's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we will now move along. We move to ordinances in second reading, of which we have none. Resolutions, I'm going to call on Mrs. Fisher for the first one.
Your Honor, I do have a resolution authorizing an expenditure of funds for the purchase and implementation of software upgrades for the case management system used by our Kettering Municipal Court and Kettering Clerk of Courts. The estimated cost, we have two estimated costs, for 2024 is $329,280, and then an annual cost for 2025 to 2029 is $49,187.50. We have nothing budgeted at this time, and it is requested by our Clerk of Courts and both of our judges, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason, do you have some comments?
Yes, Your Honor. The Clerk of Court and the Kettering Municipal Court will be upgrading their case management system software. The upgrade will be for both the criminal traffic and the civil divisions of the court, providing text and email notifications to customers, a probation system upgrade, an electronic document management upgrade, and overall upgrade to what is a legacy system in the courts. This has been long in the works. The purchase of the software upgrade and the annual fees will be paid using the Court Special Projects Fund and the Clerk of Court Computer Fund. And I think it's important to note that these funds are derived from court costs and not from the general fund tax dollars of the city. Be glad to answer any questions you may have. I will also note, this overall cost is significantly less than what has been originally, you know, has been projected in the past, and we've been pleased to work with the courts on helping make this a reality.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Greason? Okay. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. The estimated cost is $329,280. The amount budgeted is zero. This is requested by the Finance Department, and I move for approval.
Second. It's been moved in second. Mr. Greason?
Not a lot to add, other than this is the, you just approved or authorized us to expend the funds. Now we need to appropriate them so that they can be spent, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. We have no ordinances in first reading this evening. Mrs. Haislip, do we have any certifications and petitions tonight?
No, Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay. Thank you. There is one public hearing this evening. Tonight, City Council is hearing the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision in case number PC-24-005, which approved an application for a conditional use. City staff will make a presentation first, then the appellant may present, followed by the applicant. Presentations will be made from the lectern, right there. Witnesses, if any, will sit in the witness box. That is the table here with the two chairs waiting there. All persons giving testimony or evidence will be subject to cross-examination. If you have documents that you want council to consider, you may submit those to council at the end of your presentation. After the presentations, council will take comments from those members of the public who are present and wish to be heard. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons commenting will be subject to cross-examination. Since City Council is sitting as judge and jury in this appeal, City Council will not respond to questions or make statements regarding what is presented tonight. Please do not direct any questions to City Council or expect City Council to comment on the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed. Although City Council may deliberate on the appeal in executive session this evening after the hearing, it will not make a decision tonight. This hearing is being recorded, and the recording will be the official record of the hearing. Please speak clearly and into the microphones. If needed, City Council may continue the hearing to a future meeting. Now, all persons wishing to speak tonight regarding the appeal should stand, raise your right hand, and take the oath. Please stand. Okay. Is there anyone else who is wishing to address the council tonight on this issue, on the appeal? All right. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before City Council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
Agreed.
You may be seated. The record will reflect that no subpoenas were requested for this hearing. At this time, the city staff's presentation will be made. Mr. Robillard, you may proceed. And for the audience's sake, would each of you please introduce your name, your title, and your address for the record?
My name is Tom Robillard. I'm the Director of Planning and Development. My address is here at the Government Center, 3600 Schuyer Road, Kettering, Ohio 45429. Tonight, I'm going to give a summary of the project and then present the Planning Commission findings and decision. The location of the project is Alter High School, which is located at the southwest quadrant of East David Road and Renwood Drive. They have, Alter High School has asked for approval of a conditional use permit to expand the parking lot in front of the site to include 173 spaces. The Planning Commission did approve this conditional use permit, and it now has been appealed by the appellant. The reason why this does require a conditional use permit is because this parking lot expansion did trigger a, what we call a major change to the existing conditional use permit. That can be found in Section 1153.11 of the Kettering Zoning Code. This section requires that a public hearing and decision by the Planning Commission be made. The Planning Commission may approve, approve with conditions, continue table or deny the Another important aspect of the Planning Commission role is that they can add or make more restrictive any relevant standard, but they may not waive any code requirements. This slide just shows the location of the proposed expanded parking lot as presented by Alter High School in their original application. Just for a little bit of background, Alter High School has received approval of four expansions in 2008 and 2017. This included some expansions of the parking area in the front of Alter High School, expansion of the soccer arena, and construction of the performing arts building, among other things. There was a variance that was required back in 2008, and there was extensive conditions that were added and placed on that application. City staff is aware of larger plans that Alter has for the development of the property, but those aren't being considered right now. We have not formally seen them or reviewed them. Tonight's case is really regarding just the parking lot in front of the Alter High School. The Planning Commission did hold two public hearings. The first one was held on May 20th. At that time, they heard concerns, many concerns regarding traffic flow and safety. They requested a traffic analysis be done by an independent engineer. They heard comments from the neighbors, and particularly regarding landscaping and lighting, among other things as well. At the conclusion of the case, they continued it until the traffic study was complete. On August 5th, the Planning Commission held a second public hearing. It was re-advertised and new notices were sent. The Planning Commission reviewed the traffic analysis, reviewed landscaping and lighting. At that time, Alter High School did present some modifications to the original site plan to allow for the preservation of multiple large oak trees on the north side of the parking lot. This change did modify the parking count from 173 to 164 spaces. The recommendations of the traffic analysis came back as follows. To retain the current on-street parking and renewed enforcement, direct onsite traffic for efficient circulation, stagger school start times, restrict left turns for exiting vehicles, and add more stacking space onto the David left turn into the parking lot from David Road. In addition to the hearing and considering neighbors' concern, the Planning Commission must make favorable findings for nine criteria that are outlined in the zoning code in Section 1153.08. I'm going to spend a little bit of time going through these because these are important. Criteria A, the proposed conditional use shall comply with all applicable regulations of the zoning code. The Planning Commission did find that the existing conditional use is compliant with regards to the use. All proposed site improvements must meet all applicable codes in order to obtain the permit for construction. The Planning Commission did find this requirement to be satisfied. B, the proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located, and shall have no more adverse effect on the health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the neighborhood, or shall be no more interest to property or improvements in the neighborhood than would otherwise, than would any other use permitted by right within the same district. The Planning Commission found Alter High School is in existing use with the, with an established neighborhood comprised of homes, parks, churches, and recreation center. Alter High School is no more impactful than these uses other than, and is similar in character to the surrounding neighborhood. The Planning Commission also found the proposed parking expansion is intended to bring student drivers onto the campus and reduce the number of student parking on surrounding streets. A traffic consultant was engaged at the request of the Planning Commission to study the effects of expanding the northeast parking lot. They determined with some additional controls, the proposed parking lot expansion would not create any additional traffic and would lessen the demand for neighborhood-on-street parking. This requirement was satisfied. C, adequate utility shall be provided. The Planning Commission found the existing utilities are adequate for the proposed use. No public utility improvements are necessary nor are proposed. The Planning Commission found this requirement to be satisfied. D, adequate measures shall be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to prevent traffic hazards and to prevent traffic congestion on public roads. The Planning Commission found the site is primarily served by two access points on East David. There are others, but those are the primary ones. The area around these access points is frequently congested during peak times and is known to cause backups along East David, especially westward towards Wingview Lane. The traffic consultant, at the request of the Planning Commission, determined that increasing the gap between starting and end times for Alter High School and St. Charles Elementary School would reduce congestion. The consultant also determined that increasing the left turn stacking capacity for westbound traffic and into the expanded parking lot would relieve potential congestion and increase safety. Adopting these conditions serves to satisfy this requirement. The Planning Commission found this requirement to be satisfied. E, the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. The Planning Commission found the proposed use will not generate noxious or offensive vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. The Planning Commission found this requirement to be satisfied. F, the proposed use shall not injure the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. The Planning Commission found Alter High School and its related parking are already occurring upon the site. This proposed, this proposal simply expands the parking capacity at Alter High School and reduces on-street student parking. Staff is unable to determine if property values would be substantially diminished. Anecdotally, home values do not appear to be substantially diminished when located next to parking lots or schools. The Planning Commission found this requirement to be satisfied. G, the proposed use shall not impede the orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted within the zoning district. The Planning Commission found that the proposed use will not have such effect, and found this requirement to be satisfied. H, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The Planning Commission found the proposed expansion will not have a detrimental effect on surrounding properties, either in its construction or its use. The Planning Commission found this requirement to be satisfied. And lastly, I, the public interest and welfare supporting the proposed use shall be sufficient to outweigh the individual interests that are adversely affected by the establishment of the proposed use. The Planning Commission found the parking lot expansion will reduce demand for on-street parking within the adjacent neighborhood. Pardon me. The stated interest of the applicant is to provide parking onsite while reducing impact to the community. The Planning Commission found this requirement to be satisfied. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning Commission did approve the conditional use permit with conditions. These conditions are, one, per the recommendations of the traffic consultant, signage, pardon me, signage be installed designated one-way inbound traffic from David Road, two-way traffic for inbound and outbound traffic on Renwood Drive, and designating circulation within the northeast parking in a counterclockwise direction. And, per the recommendations of the traffic consultant, reduce congestion by increasing the gap between start and end times for Alter High School and St. Charles Elementary School to no less than 20 minutes in the morning and no less than 25 minutes in the afternoon. Three, per the recommendations of the traffic consultant, extend the westbound median break for left turns on David Road at the northeast parking area entrance drive by 60 feet. And, the two large oak trees located along David Road frontage, as shown in Alter's presentation and that discussed this evening, be saved. Five, parking lot lights within the expanded area shall be turned off each evening no later than 10:00 PM, and shall remain off until the following evening unless the expanded parking lot is in use for a specific event. And, six, within a year of the parking lot opening, the traffic, the city traffic department will analyze the traffic flow and make recommendations to mitigate the negative impacts to the neighborhood and any safety issues. In addition, the traffic report should be presented to the Planning Commission at its conclusion. This slide shows the modified site layout for the parking lot. It includes a breakout area here for the oak tree here and a breakout area for the oak In conclusion, the Planning Commission did take in, the Planning Commission did take into consideration all factors that they are required to consider and made findings in favor of the required criteria. In addition, they considered impacts of traffic circulation, landscaping, and lighting, and made appropriate conditions to address those specific concerns. This concludes my presentation.
Mr. Royal, I please.
Yes, Your Honor, I do. This is a, this is a record of the notices, minutes, staff reports, and presentations from the Planning Commission.
Are you finished with your presentation?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. We do have clarification we wish to make. Just hold for a second here. Don't go anywhere. You're going to be our examiner. Please take a seat in the witness box. We're all learning. Mr. Brothers. Are you Mr. Brothers? Mr. Brothers, are you here? Okay. Who is speaking tonight for the appellant? Nobody?
If Mr. Brothers, who filed the appeal, isn't here tonight, you can just go ahead and skip his presentation. I think you should offer the applicant and their counsel the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Robillard, however.
Okay. That's what we will do. Mrs. Blankenship. There she is. Okay.
Yes, hello. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. My name is Amy Blankenship. I'm an attorney with Bricker Grayden. My office address is to East Mulberry, Lebanon, Ohio. We have no questions for Mr. Robillard. Thank you for the opportunity to ask.
Thank you. I'm going to ask counsel if they have any questions at this point, but I'm going to start off by Mr. Robillard. I do have a question. According to my report from the staff report for the conditional use amendment for the hearing, it said on number I, H-I-I, that this requirement is not satisfied. I believe you read that it was satisfied. Can you please address that?
Yes. That was in the staff report that way. It was a typographical error. If you read the, the description of it, it speaks in favor of it, and at the planning commission, they found in favor of that criteria.
I, I did notice that and I, okay, so it should read this requirement was satisfied.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other members of council have any questions that they'd like to address to Mr. Robillard? Okay. Is there anything you wish to add?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. We will now move on to, if the appellant is not here this evening, we ask if there's a, someone else who wishes to speak for the appellant? Is that appropriate?
Well, you can call for him again, just to make sure. And if he's not here, then I think you can move on to the applicant's presentation.
Okay. Once again, is Mr. Brothers present in chambers? Okay. He is not here. We will then move on to the applicant's presentation. Mrs. Blankenship, would you like to have, come back up and make your presentation or someone else make it?
Good evening, Mayor Leder. My name is Lourdes Lambert. I'm the principal at Archbishop Alter High School at 940 East David Road.
Thank you, Lourdes.
Thank you. Tonight, I would like to just give a brief synopsis of the presentation that we offered at the planning commission meeting. Mr. Robillard covered much of the history, but we did present on the May 20th at the, the original planning commission meeting and then conducted the traffic analysis as requested by the city. We have proactively staggered our start and end times effective the first day of school. So our new start times are 8:10 to 3:15 PM. And that's been in effect and will continue to be in effect at Alter High School. Before the Monday, May 5th, I'm sorry, August 5th meeting with the planning commission, we did also hold a neighborhood meeting with the three areas of main concern to the neighbors. This meeting was held on July 30th on Alter High School's campus, and we did have experts to speak with the neighbors in the areas of lighting, landscape, and traffic, as those were the three areas of major concern at the planning commission meeting on May 20th. We did make 200 invitations via U.S. Postal Service, and we did have 20 neighbors attend that evening. Mr. Jason Sheets, architect with Moda4, will offer a brief presentation on those three areas at this time.
Jason Sheets, Moda4 Design and Architecture. My address is 4325 Tam O'Shanter Way, Kettering. Thanks again, Mayor and council members, for taking a chance to review this information. As Mr. Robillard presented, I think he summed it up very well. What you'll see here briefly is sort of graphic representation of that same information. The, for reference, what's up currently is, is a site plan showing the landscape and the light green mustard-colored elements are existing trees or shrubs. The lighter green are the new plantings. And that reflects the 164 parking spot layout. So there it is again, and quantifiably in summary, 12 existing trees will be removed, two of which were already taken down by the storm, unfortunately, but that is cleaned up. So we will have 28 street and site trees, 28 new ones, 138 bushes and shrubs, and 206 plantings in a bioretention system within, within the islands and to the east side of the lot. This is a lighting plan, it's a photometric showing different levels. It's hard to read at this, at this scale, but in short, it identified the, the lighting plan, 20-foot-high new fixtures, some new fixtures on existing poles, but the important thing is that there's no light bleed over the property lines and, per, per zoning code and the agreement of shut off at 10 unless there's a special need for it. This is technical information on how the bioretention system works, just a detail there per, per standards. And this is a traffic pattern, as, as mentioned by Mr. Robillard, a number of the items listed. When we were first looking at it and meeting with the, the city, everyone was aware, though those separate entities, St. Charles and Alter, obviously share the same area, and that, that drop-off and pickup times did queue up and there was stacking issues. So as part of what we were doing, city, city planning and engineering asked us to, if anything we're doing, can we help mitigate those issues? So as a result of the study and further review by the traffic engineer, those items listed were the no-left turn, increased stacking in the median at David. The traffic flow, you can see there with the blue arrows, before coming into David, it was one-way and exiting onto Renwood, one-way only. Traffic engineer identified that making, we are widening both aprons, both drives. So currently, as it, as it stands today, it's about a lane and a half width in the front there. It's pretty tight, but it's all angled parking one-way. We are widening both, both entries, both curb cuts, and that lane to make two full lanes and a little bit easier to, to bypass. So, and also as part of that, then there's both ingress and egress on Renwood. The biggest piece, traffic engineers said that the biggest piece will be the time shift between the two schools, and the majority of issues will be resolved most likely from that. As a personal anecdote, and someone that drops off at both schools every day, it is night and day. So kudos to the traffic engineers, and if, if they're that accurate on that piece, we're enthusiastic about how much more these next three or four steps will take us. Just listed those pieces, and there's a little piece there about the actual traffic incidents, the majority of which were from the analysis, from, from police, police reports, last five years. That left turn onto David, that we are saying no more left turn, right turn only will take care of most of those. There hasn't been anything major, only fender benders, but a lot of it also has to do with the cars that are currently parked, the student cars that are currently parked on David and Renwood, because the current parking lot can't support the additional students. It's mostly sophomores. As the year goes, those, those students get older, they get their license, and there's more cars parked on the street. So obviously, the parking lot taking those cars off the street was a main focus for Alter. So that, that parking lot supports that piece, reduces that, that street parking, makes the visibility much better, and then supports all of the activities that are from dawn to dusk there, there onsite with the school. And that is, conclusion of that information. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Please don't, don't go anywhere yet. Stay right there. Mrs. Blankenship, did, Ms. Blankenship, did you have any additional witnesses that you were going to be offering? Don't do it at this time.
I had no additional witnesses. I was going to make a brief statement. Would you prefer for me to make that now, or do you want to ask your questions?
Um, I'd like to ask questions of Mr. Sheets first. Thank you. I don't want to ask him as much as I want to ask Mr. Robillard if he has any questions of the witness.
I do not have any questions at this time.
Okay.
I have a question.
Brother, is he still here?
Jill has a question.
Okay. Jill. Not at this time.
Okay.
Not yet. It's just an order we have to follow. I'll call you in a minute. Are there actually council members if you have any questions? You're ahead of me.
It seems like what you were saying with your last slide is the students are safer with this new parking lot and traffic flow design.
Yeah, so it's, it's mainly the sophomores, or we're talking about just the school day, definitely, because the, that traffic is off the street then. So as far as safety, you know, getting in and out of cars as the, as the traffic continues, mostly on David, but then on Renwood too, you know, there's just side angles as you pull in and out. Renwood is a narrower street, so just getting those cars off of that, that traffic pattern will increase safety for both the students and anyone traveling on, on those thorough affairs.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council of this witness?
My question would be, so the expectation is of these 164 new spots, that there, that the expectation are the students are going to park in that new parking lot, and there's an, there shouldn't be more than 164 cars, I would assume, that are currently parked on the streets. True?
True.
The witness is excused?
Thank you.
Okay. And we'll go backwards here a little bit. Ms. Landis, did you have any additional comments?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of her that you would like to ask at this point? Okay. Ms. Blankenship, do you have any exhibits that you wish to offer?
We do not, Mayor. Nothing beyond what was already provided to you by Mr. Robillard from the planning commission.
You may now make your final statement.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to briefly state, council's, council's review of this planning commission decision is spelled out in your codified ordinances at 1153.15.1, and your review is, when an appeal is made, that there is an alleged error in a written decision of the planning commission. I think Mr. Robillard's presentation tonight, along with the review of the, the material that was provided to the planning commission, along with planning commissions, the minutes from their meetings, which bear out very careful consideration of the two issues that were raised in the appeal filed, the two issues being narrowly limited to traffic and perhaps some landscaping concerns about the trees. I think it's clear from planning commission's deliberation, their request for a traffic study, and then finally with their carefully crafted conditions that they placed on this conditional use, that in fact, planning commission did take the time to consider those issues that were raised on appeal. And that's all I had, Your Honor. Thank you so much, counsel.
Okay. Thank you. It is now time for public comments. You may not ask questions of city council or expect city council to comment. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Each person may speak only once. Please do not repeat material that has already been covered. Each person speaking will be subject to cross-examination by the parties. Before you begin, you must state your name and address and state whether or not you took the oath. If someone did not take the oath, we will administer it to you at this time. Those who are in favor of the decision, would you please stand? Okay, we have no, are you in favor of the decision of the planning commission?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No. Okay. I know, it's confusing.
I'm sorry.
Okay. For each speaker, let's see, um, sort of changes a little bit with Mr. Brothers not being here. Those who are opposed to the decision, please stand. That wish to speak tonight, not just whether you're opposed or not, but if you wish to speak tonight, please stand. Okay, there we go.
She took the oath of office.
Okay.
She did take the oath of office.
Are you Constance Jackson?
Not everybody.
Okay. She did sign up to speak. Is she here? That's you? Okay. We will take this lady first, and you did take the oath.
She did.
All right. Please come down.
My name's Teresa Kinnison. I live at 4540 Renwood Drive, which is diagonally from the entrance by the football field on Renwood. Our main issue is the parking lot, it's already been agreed to. Our main issue is the exit onto Renwood. There are so many safety issues coming out, all that traffic coming out onto Renwood. We've got kids on Pepper Hill. We've got kids all along Pepper Hill, Renwood, down on that corner, and you're, just like they said, they've got sophomores that's getting their license, and they fly. If you've ever been, which I know you have, to Fairmont, and you see those kids pulling out that parking lot, and they're wanting everybody to come out on Renwood. If they can put the exit on David, that's fine. Put 20 mile an hour zones up. As far as the school starts, doesn't matter. They changed it, what, 15 minutes? The time doesn't matter. I've driven a school bus, I've been driving over there for 30 years. There's a lot of young kids that lives by Alter, and you've got the young kids get out before the high school does, and they are out there playing, and you're putting these guys that's coming out of that parking lot through the neighborhoods when you can just put them out on the main street. There's, I mean, there's no reason to even have them go through the neighborhood. That's nothing but a safety issue. The parking or the, the survey that they've done, they've not done it during school hours. When they're there during school hours, then I will agree with what they're saying, but these guys are engineers. We live in the neighborhood. We know what goes through there. We see these 16-year-olds and 17-year-olds pulling out of Alter and flying down our street, and you guys are wanting to put a parking lot for 164 students, and they will be wrecks. You need a light, or you need a stop sign, you need to haul them off on David because their main, their affair is to... because their main thoroughfare is to Ackerman. They're all going to be turning onto Renwood. If you look at the map, that's the only exit out. They're going to go Renwood, down Pepper Hill, to Ackerman. None of them's going to go out David to go towards Bigger. That's completely asinine. That's not even, and also, it's a hazard. You've got students from Alter that is walking. There's three students that I've seen as I'm driving my school bus along through the neighborhood. Three students lives on the other side of David that's crossing over David at Renwood. They're high schoolers, but they're students. So, they're not thinking of them, you know, running down through there or driving. And you've got young kids, you all have kids. Well, maybe most of you have teenagers. But you know how they drive and how dangerous they are. That's, you know, we live in the neighborhood, we see it. You guys don't. We're not, we don't have no issue for the parking lot, I don't think. But it's coming down through the neighborhood. We don't want it. We know there's other phases that's going on that's not being told. You know, this is the first phase. They're not letting us know about the other ones. We don't have an issue with that. Right now, it's the parking lot. And it's the safety. It's the safety of the kids in the neighborhood and the students. That's all I have. I mean...
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to offer a chance for Mr. Robillard and Ms. Blankenship. Blankenship, too. Question. Mr. Robillard?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, you don't have any. Do you have any questions, Oliver? Okay. Any member of council have any questions?
I have a question. In the document from, I think it's a city presentation, Brian, I think it's your document, it has the traffic study findings, and it looks like it was done during the school day, but you had stated there wasn't a study done during the school day.
When we were here the last time, there was never one done during the school times. It was done in the summertime.
In the summertime?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm looking at, it's page three of the Alter document on the... I don't know what the document's called, I apologize. The one, "To You," it was "To You," Brian, not "From You." It states that there was a congestion study done on September 12, 2023, and April 10, 2024. Is that correct? Is that, there was a study?
I would have to defer to Engineer Brad Waller, who's representing the Traffic Division on that particular matter. That study was conducted before my arrival with the city.
Is Brad here?
Yeah. So, data was collected by city staff during school hours on a September date. That information...
Stand by the microphone, please.
That information was collected by city staff on a school dismissal, I believe. Maybe it was even arrival for that September date. That date...
September what?
September 23rd. I don't have the document, if I may.
It says the 12th.
September 12th. And that information was given to EMHT, who did the engineer study. A lot of these traffic studies, in addition to the counts, are largely accident-based. So, all of that accident data is through ODOT and their GCAT system for five years past. So, in conjunction with both the timing of dismissal and arrival, there's also the traffic accident history. Those results showed that there was only 10 crashes that occurred in the arrival time and dismissal time during the school year. The Ohio Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices recommends if there is five crashes within a year, that engineering intervention would be required or recommended. So, given that there were 10, it shows, 10 in five years shows that it didn't meet that threshold. Additionally, those 10 crashes were collected from the entire area surrounding Alter and St. Charles, Ackerman, David, and Renwood, so not just a specific location. A point to mention, though, four of those crashes did occur at this exiting onto David Road. That is why there is a limited right turn only movement suggested from the Department. This would hopefully eliminate most of those crashes as they were in that, coming out of Alter High School onto David Road. And that was the biggest isolated area still for crashes within five years, again, not meeting that threshold.
Could I just clarify? You're saying that the study was over five years, that they had 10 crashes, and the recommendation is no more than five in one year?
Five in one year at an isolated location, something that can be controlled, yes.
Okay.
So, at a specific intersection.
So, this did not in any way meet that criteria?
No, and the counterargument, and I definitely feel for you, these are your kids that we're concerned of, we are all parents here. The counterargument is that you don't want to wait until there is five accidents. However, there's always going to be an accident, there's always driver error, these are always high school kids, these are our worst drivers, definitely. It still doesn't meet that threshold. I would love to line our roads with bubble crap.
Right.
Excuse me, Your Honor. Ms. Kinnison had her five minutes. She is done.
I definitely took some of her time.
May I respond to this?
I think she's out of order.
Out of order. Okay. You did have five minutes, full five minutes.
Well, I'm just saying...
Yeah, before we called you up.
The accidents was on David because all the cars were there. You're talking about putting all the cars in the parking lot now. The cars ain't going to be out there when they pull out.
I understand, ma'am. Thank you. Mrs. Jackson, did you wish to speak? I know you signed up here, but there might have been some confusion as to whether that was just signing in or signing up.
My name is Constance Jackson. I live at 4524 Wingview Lane. First of all, I think a lot of us neighbors are thrown for a little bit of a loop that our individual neighbor who filed the appeal isn't here and did not present, you know, the neighbor's concerns. But I'm just going to say a few things of how I feel. As a neighbor, I'm frustrated by this whole process. I feel the Planning Commission did not fully address the negative impacts and the neighbor concerns. I feel Alter has pushed their plans through. I feel like they say they want to be a good neighbor, but I haven't witnessed actions to be a community partner. They did not engage with any of the neighbors ahead of time to tell them of any of these plans. We learned 10 days before the May commission meeting. After that commission meeting, they did hold a meeting, but, I'm sorry, they did hold an event. It was more, I felt like a show and tell. There was no meeting. We walked in the room, and there were three boards set up, and we got to go individually. Each person got to go look at the boards presented, which they had on this slide here, and ask questions individually. There was no community dialogue or community discussion together. I feel like the loss of this green space in the neighborhood, more steps should be taken to make this fit into our neighborhood. The loss of a very large green space and replacing it with 160 or 70 cars. And then, there are not going to be any no parking signs on David or Renwood, so it's going to look like, in my opinion, Alter Fest every school day with cars could possibly be on the street and a large parking lot right in the middle of our neighborhood when we're used to a very large green space. Granted, they want more parking, but is there really the need for as many as there are? Can we have more green space? Which is one of the things we asked in the appeal. In addition to all of the neighbor's concerns of the traffic, yes, there haven't been accidents, but there's been close calls. There's worry for people when their kids are playing in the yards, and I don't feel like that has been addressed. So, I ask you, who would want a large green space replaced with a large parking lot in your neighborhood? And how would you feel if you were a neighbor and this was your neighborhood? That's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. You do have a little bit more time if you wish to add anything?
I just feel like there's additional things that could be taken. I know they did the traffic study, but there's no traffic management plan, so it appears it's like a free-for-all when school lets out. There's no plan like there are in some schools of someone outside directing or helping the traffic, helping the traffic and the students exit. I think that's one thing that could be done.
You don't think that the traffic direction signs with the right turn, the left turn that is recommended in your doing that?
No, I feel, I'm sorry, no. I feel there's too much traffic that's going to be directed to Renwood and Pepper Hill. I don't live on Renwood and Pepper Hill, but I just feel for those people who do live on Renwood and Pepper Hill with all of that traffic being addressed or directed there. When you turn out of Renwood, there's not a lot of space. If you turn left and want to go to Far Hills, there's maybe 10, space for 10 cars or whatever. And if there's a school bus or two, it's even less cars. I'm not a traffic engineer, but it just feels like it's pushing the traffic that way into the neighborhoods instead of having it exit on David. I walk a lot in the neighborhood, and I was looking at the middle school at Troyer and Ackerman. I forget if it's Van Buren. They have clear signs, you know, during this time, you only enter this way and you only exit this way, and they push the cars on Stroop. They don't push the cars on Ackerman.
Okay. Your time is down.
Thank you.
Okay. I will give Mr. Robillard an opportunity to ask you any questions?
I do not have any questions.
Okay. Ms. Blankenship? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. One last opportunity. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the decision? You see a second? Okay. Yeah. I got that one. There's just one. Okay. Come on down. Sir, did you take the oath?
No, I did not.
Okay. I'd like to administer... Okay, I need to administer the oath as part of the process. Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before City Council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Under penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Robert Zimmerman, 922 Lawn Wood Avenue, Kettering, Ohio. My question is, and it's directed to the traffic study. If I got it correctly, there's exit between St. Charles and the convent will be a right turn only now. Is that correct?
It's not appropriate for Mr. Zimmerman to be asking questions of any witnesses. This is not what the public comment is for. He can give testimony for or against the proposal, but questioning a traffic engineer, that's inappropriate at this time.
Can you rephrase your question to be more of the form of a statement?
Okay, I live on Lawn Wood. Okay, now with the new traffic study, every, all, I don't know how many kids park in the back parking lot, 350, will now all be turning right. Anybody that wants to go north, northwest, doesn't matter where they want to go, they're going to be going through residence. Now, they're going to go through probably Renwood to the left because that'll be the quickest way they can get there. They'll go through Lawn Wood or Renwood to get back to Ackerman, to get to David, to head up wherever they want to go. So, now you're not only putting the south side of Renwood, but you're also putting the north side of Renwood and all those neighborhoods. Plus, anybody that's in the front parking lot will not be, they will be obviously going Renwood because you're not going to be able to go take a left to David because you've got 200, 300 cars that'll be heading that direction. So, it'll be, it makes it worse for everybody. And, you know, it's not just everybody who's worried about the south side of David on Renwood. Now, it's also the north side by making that a right turn only.
Thank you. It is appropriate for Mr. Robillard to cross-examine? Yes?
I do not have any questions.
Okay. Ms. Blankenship? Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. Anybody else? Okay, one more. Are you opposed? Okay. Have you been sworn in? Okay. We will do that first. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before City Council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalty or perjury?
I do. I do. And it's Lisa Hoover, 4532 Wingview Lane. Okay. I just have a few notes. Again, I thank you for your time to speak here. It's been an interesting process to go through this. As a resident, we have so many voices that we want to say about how lifestyle is in that area. And we love Alter. We moved there because of it, and we enjoy the space. But just to have a little bit of an addition, what it feels like, to make an impact is kind of bigger than what I feel like everybody understands because you don't live it, breathe it every day. You know, you don't, you're not there. So, with that, there's a couple items that I made note of that I wanted to just bring up. First, on the first meeting, we did talk about a traffic study, but we found out in the second meeting it was a traffic analysis, which in my understanding was a completely different thing. The traffic study would have taken consideration of current traffic adding on this traffic. The traffic analysis, as we found out, was only pertaining to that parking lot coming in and leaving. And I think that's significant that I think we're missing. That's one. Sorry, I'm nervous. Two, when we talked at the last meeting, they were going to approve, they approved it with coming back a year later and assessing the traffic. Well, isn't that kind of pushing the toothpaste out of the tube and then looking at it? I mean, aren't we going to kind of think about how that impacts everybody's neighborhood, the existence there, before we just put this out there and not make any changes? And the last one, kind of piggybacks with that, all of the view we've ever seen was the first exit onto Wingview with the new parking lot. And again, the parking lot, we understand it, but no one's taking into consideration the second exit out of Alter that's behind the building where the field is. So, you're going to have cars coming out the second exit, the first exit that they're proposing, right? And then the second one all at the same time. So, Wingview, again, I don't live there, but I understand the impact of having two exits all trying to go left or right onto Wingview, to Renwood to exit out into the neighborhoods. So, sadly, I think all of the visual aids we had did not show that second piece because I think that's very important in the impact of how that traffic and all the people leave the building. I mean, that parking lot, if that makes sense. Sorry again. I'm just trying to get my point out. So, I think that was pretty much the items I just wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robillard, did you have any questions?
No questions, Your Honor.
Ms. Blankenship? Okay. Counsel? All right. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Okay. We will conclude this meeting at this point. I share the concern raised by one of the applicants for the no-show of the opposition. It's obviously made this a very difficult meeting to have and, but be that as it may, we did not have them. So no further evidence to be submitted at this time. The public hearing is now closed. And counsel will make a decision of the appeal and release that at a future meeting. We will now return to the regular order of the day with the city manager's report.
When you're leaving, please be very, very quiet because the voices carry and we're still finishing the meeting up. That'd be very great. Thank you.
Your Honor, I'd be glad to. First of all, I want to give you a quick yard debris cleanup update. And I think kudos need to go to all of our first responders, our police, fire, dispatch, and service crews that did a great job responding to the recent storm. I wanted to highlight on the record that some of the things that we're doing to help our community clean up, we, as you know, extended our hours at the Yard Debris Center through October 13th, and that appears to have been successful. We've had two, over 2,000 cars visit the Yard Debris Center since September 28th, and 25% of those were during the extended hours. So we're glad to see that people are taking advantage of that service. Rumke will continue to take up to three tide bundles next to the residence totter. So if you're down to the small amounts of yard debris at this point, that may be a good option for you. And lastly, our citywide one-time pass of the, to collect storm debris began Monday, October 7th at 7:00 a.m. Residents were asked to have their yard debris behind the curb by that time. Our crews at this point are working 10-hour shifts to clean up neighborhoods, and our goal is to make one pass through the majority of the city through the, by the close of business at the end of this week on Friday. Also, we're celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th. And you may know that we're doing a Hispanic Heritage poster contest and art contest. The submission deadline date is rapidly approaching, October 11th, and there'll be an exhibition of those works, October 21st to the 26th, at the Rosewood Art Center, and an award ceremony on October 26th at 2:00 p.m. Encourage your youth to participate. Just when it seems like we picked everything up in the community, we know that leaves are falling, and our normal leaf pickup is beginning Monday, October 21st, starting in District 1. We're also pleased to participate in the DEA Trug Takeback on October 26th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Kettering Police Department. I think Ms. Kirchner outlined what we're doing with Make a Difference Day. Did a great job doing that at the beginning of the council meeting, and thank you very much for recognizing the work that's being done there. But on October 26th, we'll join thousands of other volunteers across the country as the City of Kettering partners with community groups and organizations to help our friends and neighbors. Some of the projects that are being undertaken are listed on the screen, and we're proud to continues Kettering's commitment to volunteerism. And if you weren't aware, on October 31st, it's beggars' night, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
What's, I'm sorry, what's the, what's a normal volume at the Yard Debris Center? If it was 2,200 this week, what's a normal week look like over there?
Yeah, far less. I'll get that number for you.
Yeah, I was curious.
Yeah, I would, a fraction of that.
Okay.
I'd go less than 200, but I'll get it for you.
Any other questions? Okay. At this point, if anyone would like to come speak before city council, you may come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. If there's anyone who would like to speak before city council, please stand up. We will take you in the order that you signed in. We have Venus Miller is first. Come on down. Oh, come, be her companion, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Please state both your names and address.
Venus Miller.
Tammy Byder.
And your address?
1805 Will and Matt Brett.
Okay.
I'm in West Carrollton.
Okay. We still need your address just for, if you're going to speak.
I'm 643 Cherry Blossom in West Carrollton, 45449.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Please proceed.
Yes.
You have five minutes.
I've been having a problem, and so my daughter is going to advocate for me here.
During those year, during the years that I've lived there for 20 years at my current address, I've always had a boat. I was asked to remove it and complied. Out of compliance, I sent it to a storage faculty, which I've had for two years. However, was not out of ordinance at the time of removing it. With the eight-by-30 limit, and my boat is under eight foot, it's seven foot, three inches by 21, well below the limit, and it was screened as, as recommended in the ordinance. I am an active member in my neighborhood and in our community, including volunteering at the Kettering Hospital in past years. I'm a law-abiding citizen and take care of my property regularly as a nearly 70-year-old woman. During the year, I have brought my boat home to pack it for trips, for cleaning, repairs, and winterizing it, and keeping it until the mechanic can get it in within a day or two, typically the same day, which did not make me incompliant with any of the bylaws. However, on multiple occasions, I have received notices, including a police officer ready to tow my boat away after 30 minutes of unhooking it from my vehicle to grab groceries, or it's sitting there overnight due to a backup of the mechanic resulting in a $100 fine. Each time I have received these notices, I have contacted the city to see what I could do considering I was not in, uncooperative with the bylaws. There is an obvious internal problem in the city with their communication with each other, and for that I have received numerous answers and have been basically called a liar and spoke too rudely when I was simply trying to understand. As stated previously, I keep my boat at a facility to store it, which I pay for on a fixed income, and I do not wish to. I understand I like, live on a road that is traveled on as a cut-through to a major main road. However, this shouldn't single me out, and I feel as if, no matter what, as a homeowner, I've abided by the bylaws and I'm being singled out as I have photographs of numerous other homes in my neighborhood with the same, with the same violations I'm being cited for. I do not live in an HOA, and I do not wish to. I have tried my best to comply and still be able to use my boat. I have used all of the resources available on the Kettering. This is a type of harassment. I seek to keep this peaceful and without having to resort to other avenues. I enjoy my community and neighbors, and I wish to live happily without any bother, being bothered by the city over things I simply have not done for any violations according to the bylaws. Thank you for.
I have photographs of all kinds of.
Okay.
The first ones are of my property, and I had my boat behind the fence there where I was winterizing it. And on sometime in February, I got a notice that I had to move it. I'm like, okay. So I did. I took it back to storage. And then I brought it home in August because I was going on two weeks vacation, and I got a certified letter saying that I couldn't have it there and that I would be fined $100. And so then, they didn't see the boat until Labor Day. And then Labor Day, I brought it home again to pack up and clean it, and I got another notice.
All the pictures are. Mrs. Miller, we are not really in a position to, we can't either measure the boat or respond to what you have raised here today. However, that does not mean we're going to say you have no options here. What I'd like to do is have the city manager set up an appointment with the appropriate person, probably planning development or zoning someone, to review this case and see.
Absolutely. And we would be, we would be glad to follow up with you, and if you, I think we'll be done with this meeting in just a minute, and we can connect and make sure that we get the right party and get your name and number and set up a time that's convenient, set up something that's convenient for everyone.
Because I will have to bring it back home from time to time. Thank you for hearing us.
Okay. Thank you. And here, keep your pictures because I'm sure you'll need to show them to someone.
My assumption is all those pictures of the trailers are of other people's homes, I assume.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was going to say there was nothing mentioned about a trailer. Okay.
These are all of them. I have them all.
Of your home.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much for coming in this evening. Mr. Woods, David Woods?
Hello there to the mayor and to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to let you all know that I have mental illness, I'm schizophrenic. But also, I'd like to say that I'm complaining about Kettering Hospital for killing my dad. I was his main power attorney in medical, and I got trespass there because Inglewood Police Captain Cora lied and said I was going to kill the doctors and nurses if my dad died. I want to, I got ladies sending the names of all the doctors on here because I can't say their name. I don't know if you can hear it.
I don't think.
This is on how to do it, what's his name is?
We can't really understand that. It's not coming across well. So just proceed with your testimony. We'll assume that there are doctor's names there, but we can't deal with that, so.
Well, Dr. Nicholas Bobb, he's the one that gave my dad infection. The first time they did the surgery on him, because my dad was about to get released. My dad's a preacher. I taped him on DATV. He has a TV series called Managing the Word for the Lord, and he's on MVCC out here, which I helped him tape them on here doing religious programs.
Can you just pull your microphone up a bit? Thank you.
My dad was a preacher at DATV. We put him on TV, I put him on TV, I was a producer. And then I put him on MVCC out here. He preached the word of God, and I got him on YouTube. And my dad, he had, he's on, he had severe heartburn. He was 79 years old. And we took him to Kettering Hospital, and Dr. Nixon said he had a vertigo because he caught it from Kettering Hospital. So he did the surgery the first time. My dad started screaming, "Ah!" So then we, we said, we don't want to do it no more. So they was going to release my dad to go to Troutwood, Dallas. Doctor Nixon went ahead and did a surgery again without letting me know. I come in there, my dad screamed, "Ah!", because I found out his skin getting ripped apart, his nuts getting ripped apart. I got pictures of it, his hole, they don't know I got the pictures. He just burnt, I'm black. He black like me, but he a light-skinned dude. He burnt all in here, sending it out. They're not giving him no pain medication or nothing. I told him I want to go to Miami Valley Hospital because apparently, yeah, I ain't qualified. So they went and released him, my main power attorney in medical. I'm a got schizophrenic, I didn't know at the time because I'm bipolar, and I got post-traumatic stress because I was in a car wreck and the girl got hit by a car, and I seen her body got killed. And I was on Channel 7 News, so I got post-traumatic stress of that. I didn't know I received schizophrenic. So I started hearing voices, and I was calling the prayer line, and I tell them I hear voices because at first I thought I was getting a spirit, but when the spirit is evil, I was hearing, and I hear a voice talking about I had a gun, I was going to kill people, and go to a nightclub, and my dad die, and get a gun, and start shooting people when the police come, pull my gun out so they can shoot my head off. So I said, well, I don't agree with that. So I went ahead and called a prayer line, but they went ahead and told the police, I didn't know that the first time. And then when my dad had this problem right here, I started hearing the voices again, talking about, well, go ahead and kill people, you know, say my dad die, and shoot yourself in the head. So I started hearing that, but the police stopped me that night, Sergeant Cora Follak. Because I went to the gym, worked out at YMCA, I said, I gotta get this off. I called a prayer line, had them pray for me because I was hearing spirits, I know I was schizophrenic at the time. So he stopped me that night. He said, oh, well, you thinking about third people? I said, no, he's talking about, I thought he was talking about people at YMCA. I said, no. And then next day, you know, he let me go. He said, I didn't do nothing wrong. I find out, I guess he wanted to be promoted by the mayor of Inglewood because now he's promoted as the chief of police in Kettering. He went ahead, didn't tell me, he went to Kettering Hospital, told me, well, he went to Captain Perez. That's how I found out. And he told Captain Perez and Sergeant Scott that I was going to go ahead and kill the doctors and nurses if my dad die. And so I came the next day, they said, you trespassed. I had five police officers come out here. I said, why can't I see my dad? They said, well, you going to blow Kettering Hospital building up? I said, what you talking about, blow Kettering Hospital building up? They wasn't saying nothing. I talked to Sergeant Perez, he told me that the police, Inglewood Police told him that I was going to kill the doctors and nurses if my dad die. I went to the police station and asked Sergeant Cora Follak, you telling myself I was going to kill my dad, kill the people at the hospital if my dad die? He said, oh, no, no, I didn't say that. I didn't say that. Well, I said, Captain Perez said that, the Inglewood Police said it, and you, and you telling me that you the one that told them, and I had a hip and a cold, nobody's like to talk to them. And he said, well, go get your attorneys. Anyway, I said, well, you didn't put a report that you asked where the hospital my dad was, and you went down there and told me I was going to kill the doctors and nurses if my dad die? And he said, well, go get your report. I got the Civil Rights Commission in Kettering right here investigating, and thing make it bad, I didn't see my dad on the video. He screamed, "Ah!", all that pain coming in there. He, he had a seizure, grabbed the male nurse right here, and I had a woman priest, it was a pretty white woman with black hair, right here, and there's a white man chaplain right here, it wasn't the main chaplain, and then praying my dad's mouth.
Sir, your, your time is up.
Okay.
Obviously, you have a very serious problem here.
Yeah. And also, I said that the male nurse slapped my dad's face, choked him, and then my dad went critical next day.
Okay. I'm afraid that we don't really have the jurisdiction to help you here. I understand from seeing your request to speak that you have a physician that you're under, currently under treatment with?
Yes, definitely.
And would request that you get back with him?
Oh, I'm with him, I see him next week.
There really isn't anything that we can do for you here tonight, but we can pray for you and wish you the very, very best. And please follow up with what your doctors recommend for you and your dad.
Okay. The question, my problem was the Civil Rights Commission, Kettering- Okay, my question, my problem was the Civil Rights Commission, Kettering Hospital lied, said they didn't, the guy never choked my dad's face, they told the civil rights lady that, but the woman chaplain, the male chaplain witnessed him get choked in the face, and he choked him, and they wouldn't ask, they want to let the civil rights lady talk to the lady, and they act like they don't have surveillance, but he did get choked on there, and they witnessed, and they won't let the civil rights lady talk to them at all about it. And they witnessed my dad get choked, and the next day, he went critical with the infection. So they're not letting civil rights lady doing their job, far as talking to the lady who, and a pretty white woman who witnessed my dad got choked, and a white man chaplain who seen him got slapped in the face and choked like this, and he went critical, and they seen the male nurse do that and yell at my dad, and they're not letting him do that. So I told the civil rights ladies about this, so I told them to dress the mayor, let y'all know that Kettering Hospital, and I'll call, so Kettering Hospital lied and said that the caller called them and said, "I need to..."
Sir, you're starting to, to talk again. But like I said, we don't have any jurisdiction over the Civil Rights Commission. I just ask you to continue to pursue the medical channels that you are currently...
Oh, most definitely. I just, I just wanted to let know, civil rights lady knows I'm here too, just let it know that they're investigating Kettering Main Capital Hospital, and Kettering Main Capital Hospital is not letting them speak to the woman chaplain, the male chaplain, who seen my dad got choked in the face and choked the throat by the male nurse who witnessed that. I just wanted to let y'all know that public leaders, that they caused my dad's death.
Thank you. Well, hopefully, you've accomplished what you needed to.
I appreciate it, I appreciate y'all just knowing what's going on.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And good luck.
And also, I'll be going to the mayor of Inglewood, to talk about that police officer lied to me, and said the same things here.
Okay.
Appreciate y'all for the time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to council reports. And Jackie, you want to start?
Sure. The highlight that I've had was today, actually, I got to speak to all the students who, from the social studies department at Kettering-Freeman High School. It was great to see the young folks very engaged, impressed that some of the key issues that they were concerned about was homelessness, and then ironically, trees. So I showed them our budget from 23, 24, and 25, and, and so there was a perception, and I went back to one of the classrooms, that we didn't like trees, which was not true, but it spurred the conversation, which is the good thing, about trade-offs that we make as, as, as an organization. Sometimes we can put a lot of trees out, and sometimes we can't, because we're giving the money towards roads, which then led to a bigger conversation in the class about how FEMA money is spent. So the teacher was very excited that the kids were so inspired, that they went back and ended up with this very large government discussions. And I handed out seven business cards of folks that want to be on committees within the city, so heads up.
Teenagers.
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
All right, I just wanted to thank the Kettering staff, I know I'll echo some of the things you said, Matt, but for the response to the storm on September 27th, I'll just hit a couple of the highlights, because it's late. But the Public Service Department removed trees and limbs from our roads and sidewalks so that they were accessible for everyone. They worked many hours doing that, late into the night, and some, sometimes. KPD and Fire, they, they got calls that numbered in the hundreds, which you can imagine all sorts of call, in an emergency like that, that they were responding to. Dispatch had to deal with that influx of calls. Our engineering department was responding to and fixing traffic signals, providing generators where necessary. Our IT department had many tech issues that they had to address, repairing PCs and other technology devices. And I talked to a couple of folks this week who work in departments that were not affected, really, by the storm, and when they got to work on Monday, they talked about pitching in and helping out other departments with paperwork, or fielding phone calls, and all those things. So just great to see how the whole city comes together. I know in Kettering, we were lucky compared to other parts of the country. We lost power and things like that, and it was really inconvenient, but overall, we were lucky. But it was good to see how the city responded, and, and that we had protocols in place to take care of things like that. And then lastly, I'll just thank AES, all the workers that got all of our power on, and neighboring communities. Lot of long nights and days away from their families, who probably also didn't have power. Short break, and then back to a long shift, so I'm grateful for those folks. That's it for me.
Thank you.
It's well said, and I just have one thing, I want to remind folks to invite people who've emigrated here, or do business here, who've emigrated here, or new Americans or refugees, that we have a listening session for Kettering residents, or people who do business here, who are, have immigrated here on Thursday in this building, and we look forward to hearing from them.
Thank you, Jill.
I'll be quick also, because it is late. I don't have a lot of committee updates, but I do want to say the best part of the last two weeks was myself, Mrs. Fisher, and other people from the schools, from the, the community got to, we had the pleasure of interviewing fifth graders for leadership positions at Greenmont Elementary. These kids were prepared, they had to fill out a job application, they had a seminar to teach them how to interview, and I got to interview four of them, and they blew my mind. There is one girl who I'm pretty sure was there to negotiate a salary with me, like she was on it. I would have, that girl, man. So I just want to thank Greenmont Elementary for allowing us to do that and be part of that day. It was really wonderful, absolutely wonderful, and I hope all the schools can kind of take note and maybe do something similar, it was great. So that's all I have.
Not a lot to add, except just watching neighbors through the storm, to me, is the most encouraging part of what happened last week. Two specific ones, there's a gentleman in town who is substitute teacher in our schools, and he owns a food truck, actually set up and distributed free breakfast over by Meyer on Saturday morning, that's Brad, and Brad's on the go. And then what Blueberry Cafe did to make meals available to folks who were without power in that neighborhood in West Kettering. Just encouraging to see how neighbors took care of neighbors, and businesses stepped up to take care of, of the people that, that they depend on when the weather is good and electricity is on. So on top of all the things that the city staff did, I'm just really encouraged by how neighbors treated neighbors during that crisis, and how great it would be if that was the model, when weather is good and the lights are always on, that we remember that attitude of Kettering being a place of home, and that just means looking out for the people who are next door to you and across the street. Outside of that, it's just been a busy time, just working through that, and just excited to see how our city just came together during that time. So that's my whole report.
Thank you, Brian. One of you, or more of you, have said virtually everything I wanted to say tonight. Thank you for laying out exactly what our staff did during the storm. The rest of you alluded to it, but Shane, you did a particularly good job of covering. It is, it is a time that reminds us all of what's really important, and, and the value of neighbors and friends and family. I'm concerned, as I know a lot of people are, about the added strain of another hurricane that's about to hit. I mean, we've gotten through this, people believed and had faith and leaned on each other, but to turn around and have to do it all over again is, is going to be very, very hard, but it looks like it's almost inevitable. So we'll keep our thoughts and prayers with our neighbors in the South. It doesn't look like it's going to make its way up here, but you never know. I promised several weeks ago that I was going to remind people on a regular basis the importance of getting your kids to school and getting them to school on time. It's going to be a recurring theme, as there's a joint effort between the cities, the mayors across the state of Ohio, and the, and the state superintendents to get our kids to school. Right now, we've got about a 25% across-the-board absentee rate, which is just totally unacceptable. Kettering's not quite that high, it's on the lower end, but I think we're still around 15, 20%, right in there. That means they're missing 10% or more of their school year, and kids aren't going to learn to read if they aren't in school. They aren't going to learn to do anything productive, period, if they're not in school. So get your kids to school. There, that's, that's what I have to say tonight, and with that, with no further business to come before council. We are going into executive session, thank you, Amy reminded me. We will go into executive session. Is there a motion to enter into executive session under Section 12106K of the Codified Ordinances for Purposes of Quasi-Judicial Deliberations?
So moved.
Second.
Take a roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. And when the executive session ends, we will go back on the record and adjourn for the evening, I believe. All right, thank you.